Welcome, everyone, to today's Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. The date is April 13, 2023. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Then you'll punch in the ID number, which is 359-388-976, then hit the pound. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. To authorize this hybrid form of meeting, I will have a roll call of all members. Please state your name and whether you're in favor or not.
James M. Upson, I support this format.
Virginia Fenwick, I support the format.
Paul C. Semple, I support the format.
David S. Nixon, I support it.
Randy Podash, support.
And David H. Veach, I support.
I would ask that any citizen or non-board member who wishes to participate in the call via the phone, give us your name and the last four digits of your phone number for ID purposes, please. I'll give you a quick rundown about how the meeting is conducted. To begin with, a hearing notice is read by the lady to my right. This is Sarah B. Clark. She's the PPO for the town. That's the Principal Permitting Officer. Then we would have a representative or the individual who had filed the application have a presentation. When that was done, I would ask for anybody in favor of the appeal, either here or on Microsoft Teams, that wishes to speak to indicate they wish to join the meeting. Then I would read any and all letters that the board had received in the correspondence file. Following that, I would ask for anybody who wishes to either speak against the appeal or has a specific question to do so, again, by raising your hand. The applicant may rebut some questions or testimony that comes at that time. Then we would have questions from the board members to anyone who was present or presented in everything during the above. Then we would close the public hearing and deliberate. Deliberation means just between the six of us. You are not welcome to join the conversation unless a member up here introduces you into that conversation. We would have a vote. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to be successful, you need a supermajority. In our case, there are five votes. That means you would need four to be successful. Voting today would be Buck, Paul, myself, Randy, and Dave. Are there any questions? To begin with, we have some minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose a slight change to the wording of the minutes in the dotting i's and crossing t's department, I guess. At the bottom of Page 4, there are deliberations. The final bullet point currently reads, "The members commented that the proposed changes would not be substantially more detrimental in neighborhood." And I propose that we change the word "the" to "some members."
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the minutes as published with that amendment. I'll move to approve the minutes as published with that amendment.
And Dave Veach seconds.
Okay, we need a vote on that. Buck?
Buck approves.
Paul?
I'll vote yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes, thank you. Sarah, do we have a continuance request or a withdrawal request?
We have a continuance request however the applicant is not.
Okay, then we'll go on to 23-016, please.
Application number 23-016, John C. and Tracy Cannon, care of Chris Cannon, PO Box 201, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 33 Cockle Cove Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 5E, Block 10, Lot 5. The applicant seeks to enlarge, standard change, a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the partial demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of addition and the installation of exterior insulation. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and that it is located 14.5 feet from the north of Butter. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 14 feet from the north of Butter where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,059 square feet, 12.7%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,167 square feet, 14%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and that it contains zero feet of frontage where 100 feet is required, and contains 8,333 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in the R-20 zoning district. A special permit is required under master and law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Cannon?
So I guess my dirty secret's out. I guess I'm Chris Cannon representing John C. Cannon, so. That's the problem I've suffered my whole life. So this is pretty simple. This is a case of cobblers' kids have no shoes. And 27 years ago, I purchased this house, got a special permit, gutted it, and added a second floor, and have done nothing since while attending to all my clients. So it's time for me to do something for me. I want to put better insulation on the house, so I want to add it by way of putting it on the outside of the house. That'll thicken the house about two inches, thereabouts. And then what we're going to do is tear off this back wing, which is a 12-by-14 wing, and reconstruct it, hopefully with your permission, with an added four feet, so it'll now be 12-by-14-by-16, I guess, at that point. We hope to put in a cellar beneath it so we can meet some of our storage needs and reduce our bill and brewster. And we're going to extend our dormers, though I think that's out of your purview, but we'll talk about it anyway. We're going to extend them each about 3'10" to the edge of the roof line upstairs and just get a little bit more space in the bathroom up there and add a closet space. So we were approved by historic. They said it's not substantial. Not a substantial building. It's not significant, so I was a little hurt by that, but whatever. So if you want, I'll go through the 10 criteria, because that's really all we're doing. We're doing this all to gain a kitchen, a better kitchen. Adequacy of site, terms of proposed use. It's very much in keeping with the houses in the neighborhood and actually quite undersized, if you look at what's been built across the street. Suitability of site for the proposed use, it's not really changing, so I think that's okay. Impact on traffic flow and safety, none whatsoever. As you can see, we're an odd little lot where we share a driveway with two other houses, and we don't even have any land that gets us there, so I don't see that as a problem. You know, during the construction, we will consult very closely with our neighbors to make sure that they're in the know of everything that we're doing, and so we can talk more about that in a minute. Impact on neighborhood visual character, I don't see where it's going to have any impact whatsoever. If anything, it'll look better by the time it's done and won't look like it's falling down. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, no change, so again, they're fine. Noise and litter, we will use a dumpster for debris removal, so I don't see any problems there. Compatibility of proposed use with surrounding land use, pretty much what it is. Impact on natural environment, slopes and vegetation, no impact whatsoever. We will be removing some soil. That's about the extent of it. Impact on neighborhood and town visual character, well, that doesn't matter. So as I said, you know, we will consult very closely with our neighbors. Yeah, it will be a little bit of disruption very briefly while construction is happening, because they are going to have to shore up against the existing house. We have crawl space, so, you know, I expect that won't take terribly long to do. I'm going to do most of the work myself, anyway, and, you know, I probably will have assorted people coming in, electricians and plumbers, but I don't foresee more than two trucks at the most at any given time, so, you know, if you want to condition it, have at it. We don't expect to start until September, anyway.
Thank you. Is there anyone here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate you would like to join the meeting.
There is no one that wishes to speak in favor.
Then I'll read the correspondence. This is a memo. This is from Giorgio, the health agent for the Town of Chatham. She writes on 4/11. I have reviewed the plan to renovate. The plan as proposed does not add septic flow. The property is approved for two bedrooms. I have no concerns. Then we have a note. This is from Christina Bassett on March 28. She writes, on March 21, 2023, "The CHC," that's the Chatham Historical Commission, "found the home located at 33, not historically significant." That's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to either speak against this or has a specific question? If so, indicate now you'd like to speak.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a question.
Okay, we'll have questions from the board. Buck?
Buck has no questions.
Jenny?
Jenny has no questions.
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
And I don't really accept that. I was just curious. Are you going to go under the whole house and apartment basement?
No, no, I didn't win that battle. No, just this area.
Yeah, not surprised, thank you.
Yeah.
Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberation.
Dave Veach seconds.
We need a vote on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
I vote yes. Deliberations. Jenny?
Chris, it was nice to meet you when I did the site visit with Dave. I appreciated, I think I actually mentioned this to you, I appreciated the narrative that you wrote on your plan. It looks like a great project. You hit the criteria: size, suitable scale, and it looks like a great project. Enjoy your new kitchen.
Thank you. Paul?
Yes, I agree. It looks like a good project, and it looks like it's needed, so I don't think it's substantially more detrimental, so I intend to vote in favor.
Randy?
I agree with everybody else.
Dave?
Yes, I agree. It's a very modest proposal, and thank you for that. It's nice to see that with some of the changes that are going on in town. It's nice to see something like this come before us, so I will support it.
And I'd say ditto to everybody before me.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted, and I guess the question is to what extent we need conditions. I would think that if we have all construction activity and vehicles either contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, that would be consistent with what Chris has been saying, and that the other standard conditions would probably apply. I'm not sure they're really needed with respect to surrounding properties or renters.
I would think all that one first condition.
I think the first one probably covers.
I would agree with that. I mean, clearly, this is going to involve neighborhood cooperation, and we don't need to be going beyond the first one.
So I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner.
And Dave Veach seconds.
Need a vote?
Buck approves.
Paul?
Paul approves.
Randy?
Approve. Dave Veach approves.
I approve too. That's unanimous, folks. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks.
Good luck. Okay. Okay, Sarah, on to 23-018, please.
Application number 23-018, Ryan and Elizabeth Strapp, care of William F. Riley Esquire, PO Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 158 Old Queen Anne Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 12G, Block 8, Lot 1A. The applicant seeks a dimensional variance from the required road setback under Appendix 2 of the protective bylaw for the installation of terrace retaining walls. The proposed walls will be located 2.5 feet from the road where a 25-foot setback is required. The lot contains 20,129 square feet in the R-20 zoning district. A dimensional variance is required under master and law, Chapter 48, Section 10, and
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of Ryan and Elizabeth Strapp. This is a situation, and I'm sure you've all been to the property, where the house was kind of jammed in there. I learned that the lot was created in return for Jack Carr. I don't know if many of you knew Jack Carr. He was a great builder here in town. Anyway, he owned the house there, and the town wanted an easement for the bike path. And so the deal he made with the town was, "I'll give you the easement, but I want you to let me have a lot down here," which they did. And then amazingly, somebody built a house on it. So, I mean, it's jammed right in there, and it's a very steep pitch from the house down to the street. And so when it's wet, it's very slippery. Wintertime certainly is worse. There are mailboxes down there on Old Queen Anne Road, so they consulted with Stephanie Sequin, who's available, I think. Yes, there she is, if you have questions for her. And so she suggested two short retaining walls, each three feet in height, seven and a half feet apart, so it'd be room for the stairs going between them. That would give, you know, safe access down to the street. The reason we need a variance is that our bylaw requires that when you have retaining walls with an exposed face of more than three feet, they have to meet the setback. In this case, it's 25 feet. If you look at the site plan, I mean, the house is right at 25 feet. I mean, it's just, so there's no room, which is why we need the variance. So our presentation would be that the topographic conditions on the lot, either very steepness going down to the street, so there's more than a six-foot drop between the front step of the house now to the sidewalk. That's a condition that creates, we suggest, unsafe conditions for accessing the sidewalk in front of the house in wet weather or in winter weather. And if you've been to the neighborhood, in the R-20 zone, which is from Steppingstones Road down to Route 28, this is really the only property that has that significant a problem, where because of the shape of the lot, the house is forced so close to the road that there's simply no room with the steepness of the bank to modify the slope in a manner that would make it easy or safe to traverse without the retaining walls. So we think this is a hardship. We think that this is a hardship that affects this lot but does not affect the lots in the zone in general. So it's unique or fairly unique to this property. We think that the relief can be granted without substantial derogation from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. The bylaw was passed because there were some folks in town who were very concerned about people placing fill on their lot to elevate the house above the street or above their neighbors. And so the purpose of the bylaw was to prevent people from mounting up their lots so the houses would be taller than nature would allow. And so this is really sort of the opposite of that. The house is there, and really, all we're trying to do is make for safe passage down to the street. We believe there's no public detriment, substantial public detriment. In fact, we think it's a benefit should the postman decide to deliver the mail to the front door. So it's not a big deal. As you know, we've talked about dimensional variances, don't need a big hardship. I think you could find there's a hardship due to the slope of the property, the topographic situation they have there. So that'd be our presentation. Happy to.
Thank you. Is there anyone here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one to speak in favor.
I'll read the correspondence. First, this is from Giorgio, a health agent for the town. She writes on April 11. No comment. Town sewer. I like letters like that. Then we have a note. This is on April 13. It's from Robert Falee, F-A-L-E-Y. Further review of the plan sheet. It is clear the proposed retaining walls are out of the town's highway right-of-way and pose no additional concerns for roadway maintenance. Clear zone concerns are virtually eliminated by the recently installed curb and sidewalk and additional distances from the road to the face of the wall. I don't foresee additional stormwater runoff issues since the terraced wall should retain water for a longer period of time than the existing sloped surface. I have no issues with the proposal as presented. And then we have a note. This is from Mara and Bill Cook. They write on April 12. We live directly across the street at 161 Old Queen Anne. We are in favor of the application, however, we currently experience flooding during heavy rains, and would like to be sure the proper drainage measures have been incorporated into the design. That's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak either against or has a specific question? If so, please indicate you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one to speak in opposition or has a question.
Mr. Riley, did you want to answer the Cook's note?
Well, I didn't see it before, so I know that shortly after this new home was built, and I think the new owners of the Carr property paved the garage, paved the driveway, which, as you look at the property, services to the house in the rear, the driveway is on the right-hand side as you look at the house. And I know that there was a significant flood issue from water coming down that driveway. Because it's not our driveway, so I know that because my partner was involved with representing those folks, you know, getting relief from that particular issue. So all I can say is that, as the town engineer indicated, having the walls there is going to reduce runoff since they're no longer going to have, you know, a continuous slope down to the sidewalk. Again, I wasn't aware that there was a flooding issue. I knew there had been in the past. I didn't realize there was one today. We'll certainly reach out to them, and Stephanie Sequin is online. I don't know if Stephanie would like to comment on that from the perspective of the effect that, and there's Stephanie.
I am.
Yeah, the effect that our walls are going to have on potential stormwater runoff.
Yeah, Stephanie Sequin with Radwaren Wilcox. And all I can say is the comment from, I guess, was that the highway manager or something, pretty much sums it up. Right now, there's just a continuous slope from the upper grade at the building down to the road elevation with these walls, where we're terracing that, so we're creating a flattened area in between the two walls. That's going to be planted, so that will absorb a lot of the runoff that is coming from in front of the house. So I think it definitely will be an improvement to whatever the flooding situation is.
Thank you. Questions from the board.
Bill, in looking at the hardship question in part, I'm wondering, why aren't your clients simply able to go out the front door to the driveway and walk down the driveway to the road and follow the sidewalk?
They could. They prefer to, but people are going to use their front yard unrelated to going to get their car out of the driveway, and in wet conditions, it's slippery and dangerous. In other words, if this was just for them to get from the house, if the only purpose was for them to get from the house to the sidewalk, you're right, they could do that. But they have children, and they have guests, and they're concerned that people who, you know, would walk towards the street from the house, you know, could be injured or, you know, fall in any event. So that's the reason why, yeah, but yes, they can walk around, but people tend to mosey more than walk, so.
Do you know, at the time that the property was subdivided and the house was built, whether any change was made to the elevations on the lot?
I believe that they provided a flat area. I think they, I lived next door for 30 years, can I remember? I'm pretty sure that they did some terracing for the house, because the slope would not continue from the street up to the Carr residence. That was the red house that had the house that Jack built on it. That was Jack Carr. So there might have been some flattening between those properties. Seems to me that there's a retaining wall at the back property line, too.
Okay, I have no other questions. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So is the hardship that you're talking about, that they can't walk on their lawn because it's too slippery and they're going to, like, fall down and get muddy?
Well, they can walk on the lawn. I think in wet conditions or in winter conditions, it's dangerous, and that's what they.
And it seems to me, and I'm not against it, so don't get too concerned, but it does seem to me that it's just going to look nice, and that's why they want it. That's where.
Well, there's nothing wrong with wanting it to look nice.
I think it will look nice. I do. And I think it's concerning, you know, to live right near the bike path and everything, you know, and maybe people throw trash or whatever, and the wall will look really nice. I think maybe people are going to stop and sit on it, have a drink or things like that, so it's something to think about. But I. But I don't really, I'm not convinced on any hardship whatsoever yet, but maybe I'll get there.
Dave.
Yeah, the thing that crossed my mind out there, Bill, looking at the situation, too, perhaps you'd agree, but, you know, I was thinking about just the maintenance of that slope the way it is, as lawn presents some difficulties. You know, certainly it can be done, but trying to mow that, keep it mowed near that, it struck me that perhaps from a safety standpoint, in that regard, this would be an improvement.
Well, I'm happy to adopt that argument. I hadn't thought about it, but...
I'm just pointing it out. Thanks.
You know, we were focused really more on the potential use of that area. In other words, without the retaining walls, there's effectively no use of the area because of the steep pitch and the risk in wet or wintery weather. So with the retaining walls, they can be used safely. So it's really, it really is a safety issue. I think it's, I think there's a side benefit in that it's going to prevent stormwater. I didn't realize stormwater was an issue until the Cooks mentioned it, but it's going to prevent stormwater from going down onto the road as well.
Buck.
So, Mr. Riley, I'm having trouble with hardship. The assessor's card shows that your clients bought this two years ago?
Yeah.
Something like that. And obviously, the topograph, the contour of the property was a problem to the market. It's existed. They bought it, and now they're asking for a variance. Did they realize that that might not be an easy thing to get when they purchased the house?
I did not represent them when they purchased the house. But I believe that whatever it was, they probably didn't realize the safety issue when they purchased the property. And with two years of ownership, they came to realize that, I mean, they have a sidewalk, their mailbox is on the sidewalk, and in wet or wintery weather, they have to walk around. They just can't walk from the house down to the mailbox because it's not safe. And so I think the thing for you to consider was whether the hardship, such as it is, arises out of the soil shape or topography of the property. And I think that it does. You know, and as the Supreme Judicial Court has said, for dimensional variance, you know, you don't need a large hardship. If you can find a hardship, you'd have the ability to grant a variance. So that's the...
So you don't feel it's a self-created hardship?
Not at all.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, the grade, the grade of the property is there. They leveled out the back of the lot, but, you know, I don't see how it's a self-created hardship. I mean, that's the topography of the property.
It was there when they bought it.
Well, that's correct. That's the whole idea.
And if they did due diligence, and you wouldn't have had to look too hard to see the topography, but that's, you know, I'm just...
I know, but Buck, if we could just address that for a minute. So the fact that they didn't comprehend the potential safety issue when they bought the property, all euphoric because now they have a place in Chatham, how great is this going to be? And then they spent time there, and they realized the roof leaks and the driveway there, you know, no, they realized there was a safety issue after they'd been there for a while. So they consulted with Stephanie and came up with this proposal to alleviate the safety problem.
Jenny.
I had a similar question about the purchase and the... I agree that they had to have noticed that elevation, the steepness, when they purchased it, and it was less than two years ago. So one of my questions was, which you said you weren't sure, was, did they always have that thought that they wanted to do something with that? And maybe they didn't appreciate what that was going to involve. I noticed on the site visit, it doesn't look like they have a sidewalk that goes to the front door. Do they really use that front area? Because they have another front area that they access, and then they have the side and maybe the back. I didn't see the back.
Yeah, well, they want, you know, I think the, whether they use the front door in the center of the house, they'll use the front door on the side.
Yeah.
They want to be able to use the yard safely and access their mailbox, which is down on the sidewalk, safely. And, you know, this is the way to do it.
When I look at the criteria for a variance, you have to meet all three. I struggle with the hardship because I see that it's, would be helpful and it would be an improvement visually, but I don't know that it's a hardship. Also, safety. I think leveling it off and having it be more usable would be great if it was in the back of the house, but I don't, I mean, there are four streets that go through that intersection. I really just question how much the front will really be used. That's just an opinion. So I wondered about safety, actually, from a vehicle perspective. That wall, I know it's on the other side of the sidewalk, but from the sidewalk to the wall is two and a half feet. Someone in one of those four roads that intersect at that corner, it could be safety from a vehicle perspective, hitting a wall instead of... So anyway, I'm not voting, but those would be some of my questions.
All right, well, it's only two and a half feet from the sidewalk at the far southern end.
Right. Yeah. No, I understand that. It's just that one side.
Yeah, and of course, you know, we...
Bill, can I, Bill?
Oh, sure.
Can I point out, Stephanie Sequin, the two and a half feet is to the property line. There's another, I'd say about five feet from the property line to the edge of the sidewalk and then the width of the sidewalk. So, you know, we're looking at like 12, 13 feet from the traveled road to the wall, not two and a half feet.
All right, thank you, Steph.
Yeah, thank you for that.
So, Mr. Riley, I'm puzzled by your presentation because when I read the application, you're looking for terrorist retaining walls. There's nothing about a stairway. There's nothing about what you've been talking about, the safety. We need a stairway, you know, and they don't slip, fall, and all that kind of stuff. Aren't we talking about two different things here? Aren't we talking about a stairway for safety, which isn't listed here, and then terrorist retaining walls? Which is how your application reads.
Well, with the application went a site plan.
Yeah? I'm looking at it.
And the site plan shows two retaining walls with a level area between them. I didn't realize, I had to spell it out in the application, that there's going to be a terrorist, terrorist effect between the walls.
Okay.
I'll move to, I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
Buck approves.
All approves.
Approve.
Dave Veach approves.
I approve. Deliberations. Randy.
You definitely meet the first criteria, in my mind. I'm still struggling, and I'm not all the way there with any kind of hardship. I just think it's going to look nice, and I think that's why they want it. Sorry, but that's what I really think, in my heart of hearts. If I hear from comments from my colleagues, I might say yes, but I just don't really see a hardship. So, and I'd like them to build it, and I think it's a good idea there. It'll look nice. And then, I don't think it really takes away from the intent of the bylaw, but I'm going to leave it at that for now.
Dave.
Well, I agree on the first and third parts with Randy. I, to me, this, I can find that this meets the hardship criteria. I think that it's a, it's a pretty nasty situation in many respects, and I think that there's a lot of benefit to be gained for the property owner, for the town, everyone else to remedy that topographical situation. So I think the hardship is to be shared in some respects beyond just the property owner. So I feel strongly that this could meet the criteria, and I think it would be a better outcome all the way around.
Buck.
Well, I'm following Randy's lead. The hardship is a big hurdle, very big hurdle. But on the plus side, the pen and ink drawing you had up there, it's a big improvement to the neighborhood. And I think one of the benefits, or one of the criteria zoning should look at is a benefit to the neighborhood. And the improvement to drainage by changing the slope and having flower beds there that Stephanie mentioned, that, and I'm aware of the problem the Cooks have. So there's yin and yang here, but I, you know, I'll let some more people talk.
Jenny.
So I struggle, too, with the hardship. I think those are great points about the improvements that Dave has mentioned, that Buck has mentioned. Visual improvement, for sure. The drainage is a really important one. The fact that the gentleman that wrote in about the snowplow and the use, I thought that was important, that that's not going to impact. So that, to me, that sort of almost offsets the earlier comment I made about vehicle safety. So, I mean, it's one person, but it's an important voice.
Well, he's a town engineer.
Yeah, right, exactly. I don't remember his name, but I remembered that. But my, I guess I'm just struggling, too, with the hardship. I've heard our chairman say before, and I've seen it referenced in previous hearings, there's a difference between a want and a need. This does feel like it's more of a want than a need, but I'm glad I'm not voting because I, you know, I'm uncertain how I would do that.
Paul.
Well, as you, as you mentioned, Bill, this was a difficult lot to build on. And in fact, getting the house into that spot pretty much barely makes any of the setbacks that are necessary all around it. So that creates a problem in terms of building it, and the orientation of the house, although it faces Old Queen Anne Road, really the use, it seems to me, is more along stepping stones where you have the ability to drive in and the walk that goes to the front door goes to the driveway. Really, what you're looking at is simply going around the corner if you want to walk down Old Queen Anne Road. And so I think even though the hardship standard is not as difficult to meet as it would be with other kinds of variances, I don't see how you can meet the hardship variance in this situation.
Well, I think I mentioned before about my problem with not separating the retaining walls from the safety issue, which I think is very important. But I would remember, remind my fellow members that I think you thought it looked better, looked better, looked better, looked better. Well, that's not a criteria for variance. You know, it's a nice thing to say, and it's a nice thing to have happen, but it isn't one of our criteria. So going back to what Paul said, you know, I wish that all this was is for a walkway. I do. Then I can say, okay, you know, it makes sense, but this is a lot more than that. So I will also be voting no. It doesn't qualify for hardship. Paul.
Well, why don't we just, we'll withdraw and try to figure out something else. That's all right.
Okay.
Because, you know, they can...
Yeah. Motion to withdraw, Paul.
I'll move to grant the requested motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Dave Veach seconds.
Buck approves.
All approves.
Approve.
Dave Veach approves.
And I approve. Okay, Sarah, on to, let's see, what do we got? 23-024, please.
Application number 23-024, Mariah G. Kelly, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 57 Hitching Post Road, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, 14F Block 1, Lot 2. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the partial demolition of the existing dwelling and deck and the construction of an addition and deck. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 14.7 feet from the Southern Leah Butter. The existing deck is non-conforming in that it is located 4.7 feet from the Southern Leah Butter. The proposed addition will be non-conforming in that it will be located 14.1 feet from the Southern Leah Butter, and the proposed deck will be non-conforming in that it will be located 4.3 feet from the Southern Leah Butter where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,260 square feet, 13.3%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,382 square feet, 14.6%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 9,497 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5b of the protective bylaw.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of Mariah Kelly. Mariah is sitting in the audience in the front row, front row. Anyway, so Mariah grew up here in town and happily has returned to live out her dotage with the rest of us. The, so if you...
If you'd like to fire Mr. Riley right now, it's absolutely understood.
I second that.
In any event, so you bet to the property. You know, it's the smallest house in the neighborhood. Mariah just needs a little bit more living space, so she engaged Bernadette MacLeod of Radnor Wilcox to design a little addition. The bulk of the addition moves towards the street where it meets the front setback. There is a very slight encroachment, further encroachment into the sideline setback. The existing addition there is 14.7 feet from the lot line, and the proposed is 14.1, so it's six tenths of a foot closer. But of course, the neighbor is the driveway access to the cemetery. So it's, they tend to be quiet, and they don't complain much. So the deck is being enlarged very, very slightly also, so it's going to be 4.3 feet where the current deck is 4.7 feet. The, just to run through the criteria quickly, so adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the proposed use. We, you know, it's an extremely modest addition, and while there is a slight, the further encroachment on the property line, it is extremely modest. And the, we are removing some of the driveway so that visually, there'll be an improvement from that side as you drive by in your funeral cottage. The compatibility, the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, Mariah's inching her way to being, you know, about half the size of the house next door, or maybe a quarter of the size. So there are much larger homes and some that are sort of medium size, but Mariah's is clearly the smallest in the neighborhood. Extended proposed increase in non-conforming nature, as I indicated, the quarter of the addition is going to be six tenths of a foot closer to the lot line. addition is going to be six tenths of a foot closer to the lot line, and the deck's going to be four tenths of a foot closer to the lot line. And there will be a slight increase in living area. So those would be the things, increase in non-conforming nature. Again, extremely modest. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies and stormwater runoff. This is probably the flattest area in town, so there'll be no concerns about stormwater runoff onto neighboring properties. Impact of scale, siding and mass on neighborhood visual character. The, can we have the elevation again? So as you can see, the addition is on the left-hand side of the house as you look at it, so very much keeping with the existing design and, you know, provides a little more balance for the house, I think. It will improve the streetscape in the neighborhood. Surely views and vistas are not a problem in that neighborhood. Compatibility of the proposed use for neighboring uses, it's a single-family residence in a single-family neighborhood. There are no changes in sewage disposal, source of water or drainage. The, there'll be no impact on traffic flow and safety, no change in noise or litter. And the adequacy utilities, to the extent they exist, they're already adequate. So we believe that this is something that is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and qualifies for a special permit.
If there's anyone here on Microsoft team that wishes to speak in favor of this application, please indicate now you'd like to speak.
I see no one to speak in favor.
I'll read the correspondence. A note from Judith Giorgio, health agent for the town on 4/11. I review, I have reviewed the plan to renovate. The plan as proposed does not add septic flow. The property is approved for two bedrooms. That's the extent of that. Is there anyone here on Microsoft teams that wishes to speak either against this application or has a specific question? If so, please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
There is no one to speak in opposition or with a question.
Okay. Questions from the board. Dave?
I have no questions.
Buck?
I have no questions.
Jenny?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
Randy?
No questions.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave, your second.
Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Approve.
Dave Beach approves.
I approve. Deliberations?
Buck?
Well, for once, I can clearly say this, considering all of our criteria, this is not substantially, this is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I will support it.
I agree. The butter's change was literally inches, less than 10 percent change in building coverage. Looks like it's a nice project and an improvement. I would support it if I were voting.
Paul?
Yes, I agree. It's a modest proposal and it's a, it's a nice location. It's nice to have a, a small home like this available, so I certainly will support it.
It definitely meets all the criteria, and I would support it.
And I agree with all previous comments.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. What do you think in terms of conditions, Bill?
Well, the neighbor to the left is not going to complain. And the, but I believe there's room on Mariah's property to maintain the vehicles. I don't think, because it's such a small project, I don't think whatever noise is generated is not going to be a bother for the neighborhood, and I would request there be no limitations other than no work on weekends in the summer, no work before eight, no work after five.
So you're suggesting that we approach, we, we put those conditions on along with that the construction vehicles and so forth remain on site?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, there'd be no exterior construction allowed, no work shall be permitted on.
No, wait. No, I think the work can go through the summer without being a problem to the neighbor, so therefore there would be work available, exterior construction would be available.
Okay. So you're, you're suggesting that exterior construction would be allowed, but that there would be no work permitted on weekends or construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move to approve on that basis.
Yeah, and Dave, your second.
We need a vote?
Buck approves.
Paul?
Paul approves.
Randy?
Dave Beach approves.
I approve. That's a unanimous decision. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
There you go, two unanimous opinions in one day. What could be better?
Okay. Let's see, Sarah, we're on to twenty-three dash zero two seven, please.
Application number twenty-three dash zero two seven, 184 Barcliff LLC, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 184 Barcliff Avenue, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 15G Block 20 Lot V1. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and detached garage and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 21.3 feet from the road. The existing garage is non-conforming in that it is located 4.1 feet from the western Leah butter and 16.2 feet from the northern Leah butter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located 22 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required. The building coverage will remain non-conforming at 1,503 square feet, 15.2 percent, where 15 percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 9,917 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5b of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Norcross?
Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing Dan Russell, the principal of 184 Barcliff LLC. We are asking for a continuance until your June 8th meeting. We were at Historical last week, and we're going to do a redesign. The plans were not particularly well-received by Historical and by some of the members, so we're going to come back with a more traditional Cape design. So we're asking for a continuance to allow us to go back to Historical and submit revised plans to you for your June meeting.
I think, as you know, there's certain members, including myself, that are not in favor of continuances for situations like this because the date is set in stone, and it just doesn't happen. That plans show up, contractors agree, and all that kind of stuff. So what that causes is the list of people that we could have helped on the, whatever date you mentioned, and also it's extra work for the town. So I would ask you to kindly ask for a withdrawal, and when you're ready to come back, come on back.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, Sarah, what's the filing deadline for June 8th?
Currently, I have two applications scheduled on the June 8th agenda.
Okay. We'll, we'll ask for a withdrawal without prejudice, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'll move to grant the requested withdrawal without prejudice.
Dave, your second.
Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Approve.
David approves.
And I approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's being very considerate of you. Thank you. Twenty-two dash one zero nine, please.
Application number twenty-two dash one zero nine, Jeffrey and Ann Elton, care of Michael D. Ford Esquire, P.O. Box 485, West Harwich, Mass. 02671. Owners of property located at 66 Billings Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 7A Block 12 Lot S48. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 14.8 feet from the easterly butter where a 15-foot setback is required and 30.9 feet from the coastal conservancy district floodplain elevation 15. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located 29 feet from the coastal conservancy district where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,640 square feet, 21.1 percent, and the proposed building coverage is 2,619 square feet, 21 percent, where 15 percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 12,500 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R-20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5b of the Chatham Protective Bylaw. This was continued from March 9th, 2023 for re-advertising.
Mr. Ford?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Appeals, Attorney Mike Ford, representing Jeffrey and Ann Elton, along with PSD, Steve Lashine from PSD is with me this afternoon, along with Peter Pohimas. As indicated in the, in the ad, this is a proposal to raise the existing house. It was built, according to the assessors card, 1965. It's kind of a sprawling house across the slot, built kind of on an angle and crisscrosses the lot. This is an area that has seen a lot of redevelopment, as the board is aware. They've acted on many petitions in this particular area. And the Eltons purchased this property last year with an eye towards redeveloping the property. They're familiar with the area, have a, a number of friends there. They have rented their summers for over 10 years and are very excited about bringing forward this plan. And so to that end, as they designed it, they did stay in touch with the neighbors and advised them of, of how the plans were coming along and, and shared the plans with the neighbors prior to proceeding on their regulatory reviews. Obviously, given the location of, of this particular house, it's in a sensitive area in terms of the development, and so conservation was the first stop. We did go to conservation, and I can report, as the chairman will indicate when he goes through the correspondence, that the Conservation Commission has heard it, they've approved the plan, and they have issued an order of conditions at this point. So what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, to start with, is to have Mr. Lashine, if you're ready with that presentation, to just kind of go through the, the area so we get a feel for the neighborhood, since the finding you need to make is this will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. At least that's what we will argue. And he will also show you the design and how that fits in with respect to this neighborhood. And then it would come back to me, and I would kind of review the criteria.
Five.
Mr. Lashine.
Thank you. Steve Lashine from Pohimas Avery De Silva, and board members, thank you. As Mike mentioned, as always, we like to look at the neighborhood as a whole as we prepare a new design. And so here, we've outlined the area map of the Nickerson, Cabot Lane and Billings Road neighborhood. And as you go through, we started down at 17 Billings, which is down on the corner of Billings and Buck's Lane. And as you progress through down Billings, you can see there's a wide range of houses, some ranging from more traditional Capes to ones that have been renovated more recently. Continuing down, 38 Billings, this is three houses down from, from our property, 48, two houses down, and these are all Nantucket Sound facing on the same property, same exposure. This is the neighboring property to the east. This is the current 66 Billings, and as you can see, it's kind of sprawling, many additions over the years to this Cape style. And then as you continue next, 60, 49 Nickerson, which is on the corner of Billings. Continuing up, Nickerson Lane, several houses, 52 Nickerson, 44 Nickerson, and 34 Nickerson. And then another 24 and 12 Nickerson. So as you can see, just getting a good sense of what is there in the neighborhood. And then lastly, continuing down Cabot Lane, you have 70 Cabot Lane, and then finishing with 57, which is immediate butter, and then 67 Cabot, which is immediately behind 66 Billings. So that's the neighborhood. This is the existing, some drone shots of the existing house, just to get a sense of the scale. So you can see many additions sprawling over the, over the property. And our goal for the new, new structure was to really make it a little bit more compact and sit on the property much nicer than taking up a lot of the kind of sprawling length of it. And so the next slides, these are the, the existing floor plans. You can see it's a predominantly one-story with the garage in the rear that you see on the left. And then the second floor has several lofted spaces that come up. So most of the floor area was on the first floor here. Proposed plan created by Coastal Engineering and Sean Riley. And as you can see here, the left is the existing, the right is the proposed. Tried to make a compact footprint that is conforming in terms of its side, front, and rear setbacks. Here's the blow-up detail. Maintains the same curb cut and driveway entrance and then reorients the house to be parallel to Billings Road, whereas the previous house was at an angle askew. These are the proposed elevations. So this is the Billings elevation. We have a low wraparound front porch and a one-and-a-half-story structure with gable ends, coming up with a front balcony. These are, this is the east elevation. You have a side entry towards the driveway and, again, dormers up at the second floor level. This is the rear elevation, so this is facing the immediate butter to the rear. Again, a lower profile tried to achieve here. And then the last west elevation facing the neighbor to the east. Here, we've put the proposed design into the aerial shot, as you can see here, the Nickerson Lane on the left and Billings running there. And in our opinion, we feel it is a nice addition to the neighborhood and fits in within the architectural as well as the general massing. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll kind of review the, the tail of the tape here. The lots in the subdivision are all the same size. They're all 12,500 square feet. They were 125 by 100. And in the Elton's case, they own two of them because they own the house, they, they own the lot across Billings, most of which is simply beach and dune, and none of that is counted in any of these calculations for the dimensional conformity that I'm going to run through with you, just to advise you that the, on the other side of the street is also their property. So in reviewing the criteria, first adequacy of, of size of, of the site, including but not limited to maximum lot or building coverage and setbacks. The property is, you're obviously aware, is improved with a single-family home. The proposed project would end up being 29 feet from the conservancy district where the current house is 30, 30.9 feet. So there's a difference of, of a couple of feet there. And the reason it got a little closer to the conservancy district is that currently the septic system is right to the left of the house. Thank you. That's the, I don't know if I've got something here I can, oh, I guess there isn't.
Should be a pointer up there.
Yeah, that's, I thought, something up here, but I don't see it. I don't know whether Mr. Riley bagged it or what happened.
He could have.
He was euphoric with those two votes.
Here comes Mark to the rescue.
Yeah. Oh, okay, great.
Yes, he took it home as a souvenir, I think.
So the septic, excuse me, the septic system is here, which is within the 100-foot buffer zone. And so the new septic system, if you can move to the proposed, Steve, I don't know if you can control that, or here we go. We put it all the way back in this corner to get it completely out of the 100-foot buffer. When we did that, given the setbacks that we needed for the replacement house, it pushed the house a couple of feet forward, and that's the reason that we got a little. And that's the reason that we got a little closer into the Conservancy District buffer. Required to be fifty, it's a little over thirty now, we're going to end up being twenty-nine. So that's the reason for that change, is to accommodate that septic system and get it out of the buffer zone. The other nonconformity on the site, or there are two others that exist in addition to obviously the lot size, and that's building coverage. Building coverage is twenty-one percent currently, it's actually twenty-one point one percent. And fifteen is allowed. The proposal reduces the size of the building coverage by twenty-one feet. So it stays just about the same. It comes down to twenty-one percent from twenty-one point one percent. Not really a material change, but it doesn't get larger. And then the nonconforming abutter setback on the east, which is fourteen point eight, gets corrected, it becomes seventeen, so we meet that at fifteen. So we end up with the lot coverage getting a little bit smaller, the abutter to the east becoming complying, and the Conservancy District getting two feet worse, but that's a result of the septic system that I pointed out. So we'd suggest respectfully that the site is adequate for the location of the replacement structure. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. The proposed project will continue to be in keeping. We'd suggest with the relative size of the other structures, that's why we took you around the neighborhood. The building coverage for this will stay just about the same, just a little bit smaller. There is an increase in gross floor area on this, because there's a little more upstairs than there is now, there's just a couple of lots currently. So obviously, you can see that as you looked through the elevations. But that's in keeping with most of the other houses that have been built in this particular area. The extent of the proposed increase in the nonconforming nature, there's only one. It's that two feet on the Conservancy District, which I explained, is a result of putting the septic outside the hundred-foot buffer zone and pushing the house a little bit closer. No other increases in any nonconformities are proposed. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or on the natural environment. Obviously, this needed to be reviewed by the Conservation Commission. It has, an order of conditions has issued approving the project. We don't believe it's going to have an impact on other neighboring properties in terms of scale, sitting, and mass. They did work with the neighbors in some ways in compacting the house. In this neighborhood now, there are better views along the sides of the lot, whereas before, it was on an angle and kind of took up the entire lot. And you didn't get views back through on the sides of the house as it currently exists. So we think it's not going to be a negative impact on views, vistas, and streetscapes in the neighborhood. Compatibility of the proposed use with neighboring uses, it's residential, continue to be residential. I think it fits in with the other neighboring properties, as you saw in that computer image when Steve concluded his neighborhood roundabout. Adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. There'll be a new septic system, it's going to be an IA system. So we are going from three bedrooms to four. They're giving us an additional bedroom with the IA, but they encourage the IA, obviously, in this location, and they also encourage us to move it outside the buffer zone. Impact of traffic flow on safety, we don't think there will be any, there's a house there now. There really won't be any additional traffic, although there'll be one more bedroom in this house. We don't think there'll be an impact on noise and litter. There are adequate utilities, formula business is not applicable. And we're outside the floodplain, so we don't have an issue with the lateral expansion of a structure in the floodplain for the purposes of this criteria. So we think that you can find that this is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I believe there are some neighbors that have written in in favor. I'm unaware of any opposition at this point. As I indicated, the Eltons, having rented there for a number of years, tried very hard to keep people advised as to what they were doing and walking the plans around, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one to speak in favor.
Then I'll read the correspondence. First is from Giulio Giorgio, our health agent. She writes on four twelve, I have reviewed the plan to demo the dwelling. The Board of Health approved the proposed plan for a four-bedroom dwelling with an IA septic system. Then we have a note, this is from the Conservation Commission. Acting Conservation Agent Paul Whitman writes on February twenty-third. The Conservation Commission held a public hearing on February twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. The proposed project was issued in order of conditions. The project as proposed has been conditioned to meet the performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of Local Wetland Bylaw and regulations promulgated thereunder. Then we have an email, this is from Lynn O'Brien. Her address is twelve Nickerson Lane. She writes on April fourth, hello, I am writing to support the plan the Eltons have submitted. As a homeowner in Harding Shores for twenty years and a visitor of my family home for over fifty, I am always concerned that new homes will change the character of the town and of our neighborhood. Ann and Jeff have been renters in Harding Shores for years and understand how much we all care about what is being built. I'm happy that their home follows the size and look of other homes, and I'm happy to support this home. I hope you will give them approval, many thanks. Then we have an email, this is from John Fahey, forty-four Nickerson Lane. On February twenty-first writes, my name is John, my wife Heidi and I have a summer home at forty-four Nickerson Lane, around the corner from Jeff and Ann. Heidi was a recent president of the Homeowners Association. We are involved residents in the community. The Eltons intend to tear down the existing home and build a new one. They have been kind enough to reach out to us and share their plans, specifically floor plans and multiple elevations, to build a new home on their property. From what we understand, they have been equally communicative with other neighbors. We have thoroughly supported of their intentions and plans for the site. The design is in keeping with many of the newer homes in the neighborhood in terms of construction quality, design aesthetics, and the scale. We believe approval of this design will make our community even more desirable and will help support the home values of their neighbors. Please let us know anything we can do, best regards. Then we have an email. This is from David and Kathy Wilson, thirty-seven Bucks Lane. We would like to voice our support for our neighbors Jeff and Ann. And that's it. Do we have anyone on Microsoft Teams or in the audience? I don't think so, that wishes to speak either against this or has a specific question. If so, please indicate you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one to speak in opposition or with a question.
Okay, then we'll have questions from the board, we'll start with Ginny.
I don't have any questions.
Paul.
You're not going to be able to carry over that window that's on the side of the building on an angle. It seems to me that's kind of crucial.
That was a Polhemus special, I think.
Was that, no, I think this may predate Peter.
I think it does predate Peter. There's not much in town that does now, but that did.
That's a... I believe they're called coffin windows.
That's a classic look.
That is, that is a coffin window.
It's really a shame to see it go, frankly.
It'll probably be delivered to your door, Paul, so...
I think your depiction showing the neighborhood and the house in place to scale is very effective in terms of presenting how it will look and how it blends in, because it is bigger in terms of gross floor area.
It is.
But when you compare it with some of the other properties that have been built there, it doesn't seem out of character. The, I suppose I could say I was swung by the point one percent reduction in building coverage, but I don't think that really does it. But I don't think I have any other questions, thanks.
Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I thought it was a perfect presentation. And I think it'll be even more perfect for the benefit of the listeners if you answer three simple questions, just to give it, just, you know, round it. What's the difference in height now and what it's going to be? What's the difference in mass or the, you know, gross living area?
Yeah.
Now and what it will be? And also, that IA system, those are required now in all new homes, correct?
Not always required, they're certainly required when you're seeking an additional bedroom, Randy.
Right.
And here, we're going from three to four, so...
And that removes nitrogen, is that right?
That's correct. And so, but probably not required where we were able to get it outside the buffer zone.
Because those are pretty expensive.
But certainly required if you want the additional bedroom.
Right, okay, thank you.
So with respect to those questions, I can answer, I think...
The existing height is twenty feet, and the proposed is twenty-nine feet, so there is a...
So there's an increase in height, no question. And you can see how it fits in on the lot. And that's part of compacting it, so you could get kind of those view corridors on either side, which you don't have now. The gross floor area, existing five thousand sixty-eight, proposed six thousand one hundred and twelve. So there's about a thousand square feet increase in gross floor area.
Dave.
No, I don't have any questions. Maybe Paul's window, maybe the Edward House Museum would be interested. No, I have no question.
Paul.
So I have no questions, but I'd like to add to the window story, okay? Geez, me, I don't know, seventeen years ago, I had some new construction going, and I wanted a lot of light, and I had to step down just like that, and there wasn't a lot of room. So I said, well, why don't we put a window at an angle? And the builder was adamant, we aren't doing that, that's something they only do in Maine. That was the end of that conversation. But anyways, no questions.
Okay. And he's already got.
All right, I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Approve.
Dave Veach approves.
And I approve. Paul.
Well, I think it looks like a good project, and it seems to fit into the neighborhood well. I think it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, even though the loss of the window probably is. But I think I can overcome that. So I intend to vote in favor of the application.
Randy.
I agree with Paul.
Dave.
Yeah, and I agree with Paul's comments.
Paul.
Well, I have a dilemma, but I can't say it's more detrimental to the neighborhood, considering that beautiful aerial photograph that showed all the other newly renovated homes in the area. But I think some of our statistics are hard to compare with the existing and the proposed. In my experience, many of the homes that were built in the fifties and earlier, when we look at gross floor area and the numbers presented to us, and I understand the calculations are five thousand now and six thousand, well, existing is five and proposed is six thousand, or less. I suspect that the basement figure of a thousand square feet on the existing, which represents about a third of that five thousand, is probably not... To finish it off, in my experience, might be a little bit more than a stretch. Whereas in the proposed house, I'm sure with the poured foundation and the way they insulate them and put up membranes and everything, it'll probably be very easy to finish that off at some time in the future, or when they're building it. And I am awfully, I don't agree with the fact that because the square footage now is twenty percent, we should be able to build a house that's one-tenth of a percent under that when the roof is going up ten feet. But I can't say this house is more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I will support it.
Ginny.
So I didn't have any questions before, but I did have a couple of comments. Steve and Mr. Ford, I really thought your packet was, as Randy said, very thorough. I especially love the chart that's from Coastal. This is really helpful, has great information. So right away, you can see the improvements that you've made with the setbacks and the abutters and coverage, all of that that you covered. And initially, I thought, oh, my gosh, nine feet, that is a lot higher. But this was also very helpful, and in your presentation, you showed that. So I'm not voting member today, but if I were, I could not see how... So in conclusion, I agree with you, Mr. Ford, the site is adequate. The chart supports that, the increase of square footage, consistent, compatible, scale. It would not be substantially more detrimental.
Yeah, and my only comment is, I'm definitely in favor of it, so, you know. But what Buck was saying, you know, Buck, I always wonder, let's say, hmm, that house built forty, fifty years ago, the ceiling was only six and a half feet. Well, now, all of a sudden, they're seven, eight, nine, you know? So, you know, the mass of it is so much more, but that's what folks want, so, anyway. Okay, Paul.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I guess the question would be, Mike, conditions? What do you plan to do in terms of construction?
I don't believe that they're starting...
No, hasn't been finalized yet, at the earliest would be in the fall.
Yeah, so there'll be no summer construction this year.
Well, this seems like a location that our standard conditions would make sense, given the...
I think you're probably right.
Summer use of the area.
Because it certainly could go into next summer, you know.
Exactly.
So I'm going to move to approve with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. That between June thirtieth and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work would be permitted on weekends, and construction activity would be between eight AM and five PM only.
Dave Veach seconds.
Need a vote on that, Buck?
Buck approves.
All votes yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave Veach.
I vote yes, that's a unanimous decision, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Very much. I guess that's about it, what do you think?
That's all we have on the agenda today.
Okay, how about a motion, please, Paul?
I'll move to adjourn.
All right, everybody needs to vote, Buck?
Buck approv.
Ginny?
I approve.
Paul approves.
Approve.
Dave Veach approves.
And what's the official time, Sarah? Very good.
Five twenty-seven PM.
Very good, thank you, one and all. That's it.